Alright, we are live. What's going on y'all, your boy D-Mates from Mind Games Uncut Podcast, live from Palmetto, Georgia. We're here with City Councilman Tara Miller. And we're gonna talk about her reelection and some of the things she doing in the community. And y'all had to get, um, excuse my light, cuz I'm kinda, it's all in my face and stuff, but it's cool. Alright, um, I've got one question already. Alright, so, we're gonna introduce Tara Miller, she gonna tell you what, who she is and her background, all that good stuff. I introduce yourself.
Well alright, my name is Tara Miller, um, I've been on the Palmetto City Council for six years now. Initially, it was a two-year term because it was a special election, and then I did the entire four years following that, and now it is reelection time again. So, um, who I am, that's who I am, that's what I do. Ask your questions, cuz you know, it's, it's a lot of things I could talk about, but I wanna make sure my, my time is irrelevant.
Okay, so, okay, why, why do you wanna get reelected, like, what, you know, like, what have you done in the past for the city of Palmetto?
Well, the first thing that I initially did, first of all, let me be very clear, when you start in, whether it's any type of, of government on any level, you know, you go in gung ho, you don't really realize that there are a lot of things that, that have to take place before you can really emerge on the ideas that you, you know, you came in with. But the first thing that I did was implemented a back-to-school program, cuz we did not have those things in place. Um, we also, you know, me just being ready to go, took on a lot of different tasks. We have a, um, again, back-to-school program, um, we did, we've done tutoring in the past, of course, with COVID, we had to modify that a little bit. Um, community garden.
Oh wow.
An entrepreneurial program where we teach kids as young as, um, elementary age, whatever their, their goal is or vision is. We try to manifest that and harvest that into something that they can actually, you know, see they can produce. So I had one young lady, she created a, um, she wanted to do popcorn. So, we worked on that, so it's a lot of different things we've worked on, we've done a Stop the Violence, we did our first annual Stop the Violence last year. Turkey giveaway. Uh, we do a Christmas program every year, we give out toys, feed, you know, feed individuals. Last year, again, we had to modify it, so instead of us having an actual sit-down, we had to do a drive-through toy giveaway. But you name it, if it's something that's a need, we, you know, I hear you and I try to get it done, but that's how it goes.
Yeah, I knew you had something, um, event, we can't, can't at one time, right, y'all be with book bags and stuff like that, yeah.
That was one, we actually, and we also did a, um, one where, and many don't know this, about two years, no, it was pre-COVID, so that was three years ago. We started doing food giveaways. And, of course, I know that I'm able to house a, uh, food pantry in my area, so we did food pantry giveaway. And this, this year, we actually did where they just drove through and picked up bags if they needed it.
Because of COVID.
Exactly, so it's not a sit-down thing, so if you, if you were able to drive through, we gave you bags.
Okay.
Bags of food, and we actually had one on the thirtieth. On Thursday, ten to twelve with State Rep. Yeah, Mendesha Thomas, so please come out, that'd be a veterans' part.
The one down the street, right?
Uh, the street.
Okay, cool, alright, um, so, why should they reelect you? If anybody that's from Palmetto that, you know, that's looking at this podcast, like, why should they reelect you, like? I know you, I know you did your thing, but like, other people, I know they got others, I mean, I've dealt with campaigns and stuff before, and...
Yeah, cuz you're definitely in the community, so...
It makes your question though, so you know they're gonna try, do you ever come up with anything that's not true? I mean, I know they do that a lot, well, I don't...
Absolutely. And I, I don't mind that, I mean, you know, my thing is, whether it's good or bad, I'm, you still thinking about me. But the one thing that, that will not change is what you see me do. You understand what I'm saying, so when you see me in the community, you don't see a negative light shine on me. You see me actually doing things and moving and grooving, so...
Why you think, um, they do that in local politics and, you know, on a, on a higher level of politics? Like, why do they come up with lies and stuff? Some of it might be true now, some of this stuff now, I ain't talking about true, but I know some people...
The reality of it is, is this, people want to get elected, and sometimes it is by... By any, any means necessary, unfortunately, it's, it's not a necessity, if you do what you do and you do it great, and I do what I do and I do it great. We'll vote resuscitated. So it's, I mean, it, it sounds simple, because it really is, just do your job, and let me just do mine, that's it.
So, um, when is the, when is the, when is the campaign, when does they have the election day?
November second.
Okay, so all forty county the same day?
On this whole period. So every year, so every two years, you actually go through a cycle. So, um, like, in two more years, you'll have the other, it's three seats that are vacant now. That will be vacant, and then, in two more years, you'll have three more seats, and that'll actually be the three years, three, well, three city council seats, and then one mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question, cuz they, you know, my podcast, we do talk about our people. Uh, how many black city councilmen you have in Palmetto, how many black?
It's half and half right now. We have a total of six, and we have, it's three and three.
Wow, okay, okay, anybody, anybody else I know, uh?
No.
Okay.
Um, I'm not, I, I don't think so.
So what are some of the future plans they got going on for the city, like, anything you came up with, that y'all trying to push for the city?
Absolutely, one of the major things that, when I came in, and in my mind, I thought, wow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on city council for two years, I knew I can get this done in two years, was I wanted to open up a youth facility. Well, it ain't happened yet. Okay, and I honestly, you know, it was a very lofty goal. But financially, when you look at the, um, the amount of citizens that we have here in the city of Palmetto, and the amount of money that you need to actually open up the facility, that's a difference, and sometimes we don't take those things into consideration. But, um, we have secured the five acres, which is located off of Carlton Road, and right now, we're just waiting on additional funding, so we can actually put the building there. So, but tho, that's one of the major projects, and it's not just, because it's taken a little while, I've kinda modified that, cuz I'm, at first, I was like, oh, we can get like a boys and girls club, that'd be great. But now, I'm thinking, it probably needs to be more along the line of family. A family, you know, family thing, where, one of the main things I wanna do is, is teach kids how to be self-sufficient. Like I was saying, we started the community garden down the street.
Okay, I like that, we got one in College Park.
Yeah, and it, and it's a lot of work. The benefit of it is great, because...
So who maintains it, like, who, um, you know, like, who runs the community garden?
Oh, it's pretty much been me and volunteers.
Oh, really? Oh, so you know how to garden, huh?
I've had to learn quickly. This past year, we, we've done, um, I, well, you learn by trial and error. So the first year, we did a lot of different things, like, we even tried to grow pumpkins, you know, for the fall and everything. But this year, we stuck kind of to, you know, your basic, your lettuce, your cucumbers, your tomatoes. Um, we did branch off a little bit into herbs, because, you know, because of COVID, some people could not afford herbs. So, we branched off into that, I'm still learning that part of it. But, we have had to, to discontinue the garden right now because of the rainy season. And it rained so bad, that it wilted a lot of the plants, because of water, where the garden is located, it just sat there for quite a few days.
So y'all like on an acre, half an acre, or what?
It's about an acre. But we're only utilizing about half of that, cuz it's right by Wayside Park, so only utilizing half the garden, but we had people come out from all over to help, and it's really been a benefit.
Yeah, it's fun, it's fun. I like it, I mean, we, we, we up in College Park, we like it though, we got a lot of people that come in.
And it, yeah, and we working on, on getting that together, cuz it, it is fun, and it's definitely relaxing, I've had to learn to see the relaxation in gardening. Yeah.
And it, and it's plus it's real organic, cuz a lot of food, they say organic, it's not organic. It's hard work, you know, so tell us some things about yourself, like, like, you know, like, what do you like to do outside of, you know, being in politics, like, you know, what's your hobbies? You know, gotta ask, like, type of person you are, cuz like, we elect city officials, but we don't never really know, like, what they like to do, like, you know, like, spend time with your family, like, movies, I mean, she, she more prepared for that one. You can lie a little bit.
Well, I'm, I'm working on hobbies. Um, I, I just told them, trying to learn how to garden. That's a hobby, that's a whole situation.
Yeah, that is true.
But outside of politics, one of the main things that I personally enjoy is making sure that we're building businesses, so, um, promotion of business, education of business, making sure that, you know, it's thriving, and if it's not thriving, what are we learning from it? So, that's, that's one of the main things, just making sure that we see, we're seeing growth.
Okay, now, you know, I, you know, I grew up in Palmetto too, so I'm trying, I seen this a lot of stuff when came in the city, you know, far as like, um, businesses and stuff. I see like y'all got, what is that, um, that's, what is that, the warehouse coming in, on twenty-nine coming in, what is that, that's, um, Amazon?
No, it's not.
That's not Amazon, what is?
I can't remember that, cuz you, I just saw the, in my mind, I just saw the name of, but yeah, that is a three-phase warehouse, and it currently only have one phase, but it's, they provide like medical supplies.
So what about the one off, off the expressway, what's, what's going on there, the warehouse, that's a big warehouse?
Well, nothing at the mall.
There's nothing there?
Yamaha, they're building specialty bikes there right now.
Oh, so Yamaha on one there right?
Two thousand one one, some days. But yeah, that space is still available.
Okay, um, anything else new coming to the city, I, can you talk about it, no?
Well, I mean, nothing more than you've already seen in the paper, you know, Microsoft is, is coming to the...
Oh, really?
That's already here, um, uh, just looking at a lot of different plans, just trying to expand where we're getting different houses, where we're getting, um, just additional things in the area.
Okay, yeah, so you know, people always wanna know, you wanna bring people into the city, like, do you wanna grow the population, so how big is the population right now?
We are less than ten thousand. So, I mean, it's a lot different from College Park. But, but we, we're ten thousand as far as number, but we're beyond that, as far, you know, as far as heart, so... Where our work is done here, you know, last stop on Full Deccam.
Yeah, that is true, that is true, I'm trying to think of anything else, so...
Oh, Drive Medical, that's what it is, thank you Nate, cuz I could not think of the name, Drive Medical.
What's that?
Just where they're doing like creating medical supplies.
So, some people get confused, like, okay, you got...
And shout out to Nate, he's also, um, on city council with me.
Okay, so Nate?
He's running again for his, his seat, so...
So, a lot of people get confused, okay, you got City of Palmetto, and you got Chattahoochee Hill, and you got Saranby, so, is it a difference? Some people say that y'all sold the land to them, and all that was part of Palmetto, is that true or false?
Well, it, it actually was not necessarily a part of Palmetto, there were some parts of it that set into the, that were in the city limits, but some of that was Cowee de County as well.
Oh, really?
So you have, um, and Saranby is actually inside of Chattahoochee Hill, so it's, all of that is Chattahoochee Hill, but when we think of Chattahoochee Hills, that's what you think of. But, all of that is Chat Hills, um...
Their population, I know their population ain't big in Palmetto.
It's not.
It's more of a private type of?
No, it's not private.
For the rich people? So they got their own police force and everything? Okay, okay, cool, cool, okay, I just didn't, so what, anything, uh, have they did anything to the, uh, Whiskers and Mail Park? I mean, I know they hit for the, um, they added like the outside, uh, I guess you would call it outside gym with the weights, well? They still got all that going on and stuff, okay, they still play baseball, the kids still?
They do, um, it's, it's been kind of closed down due to COVID. At that point, I mean, they still have their activities going on, but as far as a lot of events that they used to have, they've minimized their events.
So that's your question, any, like, say a young, some, a young girl, a young boy wanting to get, you know, into politics?
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate you being proud of my son and honey, okay, go ahead, I'm listening.
Hey, cool, I'm just saying, like, what would, what advice would you give, like, any young kid that wanted to get, you know, become, get into politics and local politics? I always say local politics is more important than getting into the, you know, big boy politics, because, you know, it starts locally, you know, everything starts locally in your community, how you feel about that?
Um, actually, that's very interesting, one of the things that, that we spoke about at one point was doing like a junior council course, this is just something that we spoke of. Please be advised that this is nothing that has been put into the work at this particular point in time. Okay, but we spoke about that, because I think it's important for younger kids, especially in that, that high school, you know, middle school area, to really understand that, when you get in here, you know, you have your class president, presidents and stuff like that. But it's important to understand how you can make a difference, like, it's important to understand that, when ideas are created, just cuz it's an idea that's created, it has to be manifested, so it's like, for you to be able to learn those things, that's where I want to see some kids kinda, kinda transitioning to, cuz I'm like, you, yeah, they're so smart when it comes down to technology. So why not saying though, take those same skills and mold them into something that's going to be, even have more benefit?
Exactly, so, now, that's a good question, cuz I be, we talk about a lot about technology, you know, and technology jobs and stuff, like, so they say by the year twenty thirty, a lot of jobs gonna be obsolete, and now, if you look at it, from a local standpoint, if somebody wanna move in your city, like, do they have any opportunity, because like, a lot of stuff is going high-tech, you know what I'm saying, you get what I'm saying? Like, I see over here about flat shows, they building like, I don't know what kind of warehouse that is right there, we get all the flat shows, I mean, thing is major, but I'm pretty sure a lot of these warehouses are going automated, is the warehouse up there automated?
That particular warehouse, it's not, that does the medical supplies, but, um, of course, Microsoft, i- it, in theory, you would think, oh, I know they're gonna need a lot of employees, well, they don't, they only need a handful, because a lot of that stuff is, is on the computer.
Which is about the one that is coming here?
So, um, so that's, that is something that you have to think of when you're thinking about, what am I gonna go to school for, if, if I do intend on going to school? Like, that's something that you have to look at, the careers that may not be available at this particular point, or if I do have a career that is available, how am I going to market that, so that it's an attraction to those individuals who don't wanna come in?
That is true, yeah, cuz people are, you know, like, so good example, like, you, you're at a Wayfield, right? So, I'm thinking about Bradley's down the street, you know, a lot of people, they're picking Wiggly now, right? So have they, have they transferred to the, uh, to the sub-checkout yet? So Wayfield started last week, they started, so I'm thinking like, all these small, I think everybody, individual, how to get it? Um, I know they gonna take, take away jobs and stuff like that, so I'm like, you know, I wonder if they did, have the Dollar Tree did, have Family Dollars did?
They haven't, but I think that it's important, I, I'm sure everybody's familiar with the movie Hidden Figures, you know, like, one of the things that one of the characters, um, shared was, you know, you're building this, this ginormous piece of equipment, that's, that's a computer. So while I'm down here in this math department, maybe learn how to be on this other side, because even though we have computers, we also have to be aware that someone has to maintain those. So, if I learn how to maintain this computer, and I'm able to teach my entire department on how to maintain these computers, then, we still have jobs, so it's about sustainability. So when you talk about, how can I be sustainable, how can I make a difference, you don't have to create a trend, all you have to do is understand what the trend is. You see what I'm saying, so if I'm not the cashier, I need to be the one who understands how to create... You know, if I can fix it, cuz eventually it will break down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, most definitely.
So I just need to be the one who, if I understand what it was like to be a cashier, then I need to understand how to fix it.
You guys, fellow, uh, uh, Pat P-Town, Ryan, Ryan Glaze, he asked you a question. He said, Dr. Miller, what was the biggest realization for you when you transitioned into local politics?
Um, the biggest realization for me was realizing that, things are not done overnight. Um, you know, when you first enter into politics, it's like you come with so many lofty goals, it's like, oh, I gotta do this, I need to do this, I wanna do this, I wanna see this manifested. But the reality of it is that it takes time, it takes time and it takes money, so, when you're thinking about, let's say, for example, for example, you wanna start, it's just like starting a business, I can dream of a business all day, I can have a business plan all day, but when it comes down to actually implementing that, I need to make sure I have the funding, I need to make sure I have the, the aid to do so, I need to make sure if I don't have the aid, I have the volunteers. How long will my volunteers be available, because people who volunteer on Saturday are not available on Wednesday sometimes. So, those are all the things that you have to take into consideration, and sometimes, when you start something in this term, it may not be manifesting until the next term. So, it's not, you know, politics is not for the faint of heart, I will say that, so when you think about, um, hey, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna do this, absolutely, I support what you're doing, but before you do it, let's make sure you have all of those pieces in place, because it takes a lot to get things done, and people don't oftentimes see, it's just like graduating, I can, I may, I like to say I graduated twice, cuz, you know, one time, it was with my mama, she was pregnant with me, and then the next time, I was for myself. But my thing is, it takes that entire time to learn the skillset, and once you learn the skillset, it takes another time to manifest and, and see the outcome. So, long story short, that's the biggest thing, making sure that, um, I didn't think about the time or the finances.
Now, another question I gotta ask, I, cuz I helped plenty of people campaign, I know it's a lot of work, she writes, okay? It's a, it's a lot of work when you campaigning, like you said, you get the people to volunteer their time, yeah, you might buy them lunch and stuff like that, but, you out there, especially when it get cold, you're on that curve, and you up there holding that side up, you like, man, like, is it really worth it? I know s- some people budget's bigger than others, so how do you go by getting the budget?
Well, first of all, in the city of Palmetto, we don't necessarily have to deal with a whole bunch of budgets, when it comes down to that, when, when it comes down, you, you're meaning campaigning budget?
Campaign budget, yeah.
Yeah, no, we don't really have that.
Ryan said, thank you.
You're welcome, we don't really have those, I mean, a lot of times, your budget honestly comes out of your pocket, so when you want, when you want some, some...
Yeah, like your budget, like, for, like, how you get people to donate to you, like, you know, cuz it's hard to get people, oh, so you need nobody, oh, wow, wow.
Like, when I tell you, when you know that you have a goal in mind, it's just like getting ready to pay a bill, you, you better make sure you save and plan for it. And that's just, that's just the case, it's like, you know, you have to be creative in what you do, you have to make sure that, that, and, and the thing about it is, is, is this, at this level, because we're such a small community, sometimes you're, you're a little bit leery about taking funding from individuals, cuz you don't want any type of blowback on it. So, um, a lot of times, it's just, it's easier, it's been easier for me, not only speaking for Tara, it's a lot easier for me to make sure that I maintain clean hands. You understand what I'm saying, so, I just plan for it and I keep it moving.
And, um, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm texting people too, but yeah, so, okay, so, the election is in November, you guys, it's September now. So, how often do you campaign, like, every weekend, weekdays?
Oh, I campaign, I, I'm, let me tell you something, see, to me, campaigning takes place all while I'm in office, like, campaign doesn't, it doesn't start, just cuz I had an opportunity to sign up for reelection, you understand what I'm saying, just cuz I had an opportunity to qualify. To me, when I'm in a community, if you did not see me in a community, then I'm not campaigning for you or me, you understand what I'm saying? So, campaign season is every day, when I'm out, when I'm, when I'm supporting local businesses, campaign is every day, when I'm out and I'm making sure we're doing, you know, back-to-school events, turkey drive, turkey giveaway, all this other stuff. I'm not, I'm doing this cuz this is what's supposed to be done, you understand what I'm saying, like, I don't want you, I don't wanna show up ninety days before an election and saying, okay, now I'm doing something, cuz if I did it in ninety days before an election, and you look at me like I was false. You see what I'm saying?
Do you have a lot of support from the community, like, you got people that, you know, like, people who are really helping you out on the campaign and stuff like that, or no?
Um, I do feel like I have a lot of support, um, thank goodness, um, to me, whether you have supported me by encouraging me, or whether you have supported me by not speaking, or, you know, not being as kind as what you could be, to me, I look at that as a form of support, cuz either way it goes, it's gonna be motivation, you understand what I'm saying, so, whether good or bad, I'm good with it.
So, if you happen, I know you gonna win, but I'm just saying, if you lose...
Just keep it like it is, okay?
So, have you always been involved in the community before you got into politics?
Absolutely, um, before politics, that's one of the things that people don't think about, before actually having a seat on the council, um, we still did, you know, mental health awareness months and stuff like that, we still did, um, you know, we put together events, so that, are you, it was more focused on youth at that particular point, of course, but we still put together events that allowed the youth to understand, like, it's okay to be different. You understand what I'm saying, like, it's okay to express your concerns about whatever you feeling, it's okay if you wanna, um, like, we did etiquette before, we, like, it, it's a whole lot of stuff we did, we've done stuff where we actually, before the community garden was down there, we did a community garden in the yard. Yeah, so it's, it's just so many different things, like, trying to pair people, at one point, we, we, before even being, you know, on the council, we had a situation where we were trying to pair, like, say for example, your personal trainer. If I knew a kid who wanted to be a personal trainer, I would've contacted you. You know what I'm saying, so just pairing individuals up, to make them, to help them understand, like, look, you're not alone in your quest, like, everybody may not wanna go to, you know, eighteen years of school. You see what I'm saying? But, I can help you right now, learn how to do this, so it's always been like entrepreneurial push for me.
And I, I don't even know, we even talk about what's your background, like, what do you do outside of being a city councilman, like, what is your, I don't think we reached, touched on that.
A few different things, um, one of the things, of course, I have a, we're in Palmetto, so, um, people think about, oh, I tired of leaving Palmetto. Well, I don't leave Palmetto, cuz I love Palmetto, it's real simple for me, so we do have a business in Palmetto, myself and Dr. Wayfield, um, Integrated Concepts for Families, and that's dealing with mental health, which we deal with from ages five on up, anywhere from anger management to, you know, um, more um, concerning diagnosis, maybe schizophrenia and things like that, we work with all types of population. A nonprofit organization, where we talk about, where we, the focus literally is making sure that, you know, like, for example, sometimes we forget about ourselves, we help everybody else, and here we are struggling with different things. So, um, that's the focus of the nonprofit, then we, you know, just, just exploring different things.
That's good, I mean, that's you helping people, that's... See, people, yeah, she, she, she helping people all around, so... So they, they still had a fall festival in October?
As a matter of fact, we have one coming up, October sixteenth. Um, if you are a resident of Palmetto, and you would like to be a vendor or in the parade, you can actually be in the parade, the parade is free, so let's say, for example, you wanted to do, you know, your podcast or your, your personal training, then you could do your own, be in the parade. Now, if you are a citizen of Palmetto, you can become a vendor in the park for free. So that's what we're doing this year.
That's real good, I usually charge.
No, well, we're not charging this year, because we, we, we recognize that there's been a struggle with financially, for, you know, across the board, so it's like, why am I gonna ask you again to get some more money out, when this is something that we could do to kind of boost morale across the city?
Ryan, I got another question, what was the catalyst for your interest in running for city council?
Making a difference.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's it.
Yeah, it can't get no better than that, but, you know, like, like I said, cuz I know, you know, one time they wanted me to run, at East Point, I like, ah... I had so much going on, so I like, ah, and I know it's a lot of work, cuz I know... Like I say, just campaigning, like I said, I went back to campaigning, I campaigned for probably four people, and, let me tell you, answer them, like, like, this was a bigger, like, for, for the county commissioner, I ain't gonna say his name, but, uh, just making a phone call, people, boy, you got some people with attitudes, man, they hanging up on you, cussing you out, I'm like, but you, do y'all do the robocalls and stuff like that?
Um, we do not do, I've never done robocalls, and I, and I, and I don't do robocalls, we're, we're a small town, so your robocalls is everybody who called, one another tip. So, that's a good thing. But, um, no, never done a robocall.
I gotta ask a question, so, you know, growing up here, Palmetto, Fairburn, kinda, you know, both small towns, and I've seen Fairburn, they building now, so... Y'all trying to compete, like, do y'all feel like, oh, we need to catch up, like, I'm just saying, like...
Well, I'm, I'm gonna put it to you like this, with everything, um, can you get that, that real thing? Um, there is no competition, you understand what I'm saying, like, my thing is, Fairburn does its own thing, and, and we do our own thing, I think we offer something different from Fairburn. So, to me, as far as, we're out, we, we compete against ourselves, like, how good can we be as a town, like, not in comparison to someone else, cuz I can't do what you do.
Now, you talking about running for mayor? Who is the mayor, same, is it still? Yeah, I mean, wow, man, nobody ever trying to run against him?
We've had a few people.
Oh, really?
We have.
Wow, that's crazy, anybody I know?
Yes.
Really, wow, that's, that's crazy, this man's, he's been a mess since, like, a long, I mean, say, can you run for mayor anyway?
Well, you can run as, as, as often as you like.
Okay, I know it's di- different for the city, like, in Atlanta, it's a little different, right? Yeah, okay, cool, okay, I didn't, so far as a city councilman, you can run as many times you want, or...
According to your charter, you can run as often as, as often as you're elected.
Okay, what's the pros and the cons of being a city councilman?
The pros, of course, is that you can, you know, you're on a different platform to make a difference, of course, you're gonna make a difference, I would hope, anyone who choose to make a difference will make a difference in their own way. Period, but, um, you know, you definitely are a little bit, you know, their platform is a little bit different, can't get rid of it again. Now, one thing that I will say is, the real, uh-huh, sorry about that, now, um, that's, that's the pro, the con is, is that, um, people don't understand the amount of time, effort, and energy that it takes. And neither did I, you see what I'm saying, my thing is, like, there is one thing to hold a seat, and there is another thing to, to work a seat, you understand what I'm saying, like, so... Working a seat takes time, it takes commitment, it takes, um, planning, it takes follow-through. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's your question, a lot of people who, you got some people who run for local government, and then decide they wanna go into the big boy, you know, like, they wanna become a, you know, congressman, or something like that, and somebody, you, you ever looked into that? Oh, really, okay, okay, now I'm gonna ask you a question, now she gonna beat me up, I gotta ask the question.
And just be clear, I'm not saying that I'm going to answer.
Okay, this Mind Games Uncut, now, we, you know, this is what we do now. We say thing where people be thinking, but it's, you know, anyway, so how do you feel about the current administration, you know, right now? You know, running the government while stuff going on, how, how you feel about that, I know you, I know you, I know you Democrats, so...
Well, the way that I feel about that, is that, um, you know, whether it was, regardless of whoever runs the government, you're not going to please everybody.
True.
You see what I'm saying, so that, that's, that's how I feel about it, so my thing is, you, you're not, you gonna have winners and you will have losers, and you gonna have people who agree with you and love you today, and not tomorrow. So when it comes to how I feel about it, my thing is, as long as you gonna get in there and work and do the right thing, I have no problem with, with, with what it is.
How do you, okay, so if you was over the border thing, the situation going on at border, everybody know, how would you handle that?
Well, I'm not, so right now, I don't have to necessarily handle that.
You think it should be, you think it'd be handled a little bit better, though, I mean...
I think there could be some improvements made.
Okay, okay, like, I don't wanna take it to the race thing, I just, you know, far as people were saying, like, with the immigrant thing going on, they said, they think they treat the black Haitians a little different than they treat everybody else, do you agree or disagree? You ain't gotta answer a question.
I agree that there are some different, there is a difference in how people are treated. Every day.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, so, um, how, how is the, um, here in Palmetto, like, do y'all have any issues with the police, anything? Like, y'all had any, you know, any kind of problem with police brutality here?
We have not, um, we actually, is, I'm not sure if you can tell or not, but we have a, a excellent, just administrative, when it comes down to, to policing and things like that, they stop, you can ask them a question, you're not, um, that I am aware of, and you're not, you know, pulled over and falsely accused of things, so, I mean, our police chief has done an awesome job, I mean, he's been transparent, he's available, like, he don't even turn his phone off. Like, so... So when it's, if so, if you have a question, he's an individual that you can actually approach.
How did, how did um, covid affect the city, um, you know, when everything went down with the covid nineteen? How did it affect the city, did it hurt y'all, like, or, you know, economy, you know, like, economic?
Absolutely did, but um, luckily, we actually had a um, production going on heels, right, right, literally, one block over. That was able to bring some revenue into the city as far as, and when I say revenue into the city, I'm meaning as far as hiring people in the city. And um, usage of property, like, you know, being able to to rent out different space and and helping those businesses who had been closed closed down for time.
Wow, okay, that's good, um, anything else before we uh, get out of here, we we spread that thirty minutes. And I gotta announce my, 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 to you, like, say anything you wanna tell your people, you know, why they should, why they should uh, reelect. You know, we'll go back to the polls and, you know, elect you, like.
Why should you reelect me? Um, honestly, because I've I've proven myself, like, I've come consistently working, um, there's, there is no slouch here, you understand what I'm saying? So that's the main thing. I listen to the needs of the community and we try to identify a good solution. So when it comes down to why you should elect me, I believe that that's the main thing, it's it's not a, it's not a point of talking, it's a point of doing.
And my thing I will say, you right about one thing, a a friend of mine, he was, you know, city councilman, and um, he was like, man, the hardest thing is. You can't please everybody, like you said, and he's like, you get the calls that, you know, like. You know, you try your best to try to help them and then some people don't be, you know, you just can't please everybody, and it's like, that's what I probably have issue with, like, man, I, you know, I probably just.
You can't please everybody, but one of the things about it is, is that this is not for the faint of heart. It's it's not for thin, for individuals who have thin skin, because you're, because I know I'm not going to please everybody, the only thing I can do is the best that I can. And I hope that you be an adult enough to understand that this is where I'm coming from, like, like, I I hear a lot of complaints, but I can't fix every complaint. You understand what I'm saying, but I will take those concerns back and see how we can try to modify, and those things that we can correct, we do, and those things that we cannot. We see how we can improve on the next go around, but it takes time.
My one question for, and I I didn't even ask you, so do y'all have wards, y'all have wards? Y'all don't have, so how y'all go by, like, what area you, it's just like?
Well, and that's one of the good things, like, we don't, because we don't have wards or districts, my thing is, I'm not here just for. My area, I'm here for Palmetto. You understand what I'm saying, so, and and you have five other individuals who feel the same way, like, look, we're here for the city, so if I hear something that's going on on your, on your street. It's a concern for me, you know, all of it, you see what I'm saying, so that's the whole concept, like, we're not, it would be great if we would resolve. You know, because then that way, we could listen to our, to particular people, when it wouldn't stretch you, but if you're stretched, that's fine.
Is that a problem, you feel like you being stretched sometime, or?
Sometimes you are stretched, because you wanna make sure that you don't neglect anyone.
Six, okay, some, some got eight, right?
Larger councils, but most, it's 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 around six or less.
Okay, okay, wow, all right, so we about to get about of here, and um, any shout outs, or anything you wanna give anybody shout outs?
First of all, thank you so much, Nate, and again, Nate is online, I'm, I hope you've listened to it the whole time, I do definitely work consistently. You know, for everyone, and thank you so much if you were able to tune in, just, I want you guys to consider this, like, we're, we're running. Again, this season, you know, this term, um, this isn't new, this isn't for the faint of heart, but we're here for you and. We're wanting to make a difference, and we wanna see our community be better and better every single day, not just this season. And we do know that we have to modify some things, and we ask for your patience, and we're, we're working, that's it, we doing, we doing it.
And 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 one thing I will say, that we need people like Tara, you know, in our communities and stuff, who really care, you know, who grew up here and everything, so. Yeah, that, because it's a lot of time with people, you know, once they, a lot of people leave the community and that's it, you know, um, I see that a lot, so, yeah. I I think she'll get it, she'll, you know, you'll win.
And I appreciate you having me on your. I hope this is the last time, because I always got stuff to say.
Oh, no, well, you know, we can, you can come on anytime you want.
Y'all heard that.
Anytime, you know, now, look, we all always talk about politics, but yeah.
That's just this time, I got other stuff to say.
And make sure y'all subscribe to My Games Uncut, um, podcast, YouTube, uh, Spotify. And you can check me out on TikTok too, so y'all probably like some of the stuff I'm saying, but anyway, um, shout out to my sponsors. Batterup.com, B A T T E R U two P's, batterup.com, black owner operated, they got batter for fish and chicken. Go to batterup.com, you can check them out on Amazon too, and we got, make sure, oh, yeah, Ryan Glaze, he's one of my sponsors. Uh, Rest With My Thought Podcast on Spotify, gotta give shout outs to all my paid sponsors, we got, um, okay. Man, so many people, I'm trying to remember, um, I used to know after the dawn, FamilyIsFor.com, FamilyIsFor.com, check him out, he's a hip hop artist out of Pittsburgh. His name is Logic, go to um, Spotify, check out King Speech, that's his latest album. And we got TNC Multi Services, TNC Multi Services, they do flooring, notary, taxes, all that good stuff. At tncmultiservices.com, and we got myyomym wellness.com, myyomym wellness.com. They send the springs, they do uh, massages, a spa, they're black owner operated. And we got Soul Sisters, S O L E, Sisters, S I S T A S. They out of North Carolina, go to liveshoes.com, shoes for ladies only, and yeah, we got everybody, yeah. One of my sponsors just popped up, so yeah, so if you wanna be a sponsor, y'all, now, it's fifty dollars for five months, you can't beat that, you wanna be a sponsor. You wanna promote your brand, your business, you know what I'm saying, most definitely, you know, hit me up at mygamesuncut@gmail.com. It's, I don't even think I put it in the description, but mygamesuncut@gmail.com, once again, y'all, another great. I call it broadcast, I don't call it a show, and thanks for Tara Miller coming through. She'll be back, y'all, but uh, that being said, we are out of here, peace.